Call to order the Town Hall of Alt Sabro of zoning commission regular hybrid meeting of Monday, March 20, 2023 at 7:00 PM Town Hall fourth floor conference room 302 Main Street, Alt Sabro. Seated tonight, the smooth Bob Friedman chair, Jerry Lewis secretary, regular commission members, Mark Delmonico and Anne Marie Thorson. And seated tonight so far for Mark Calderella will be Sandy, oh, no, I think we have Sandy D'Essenzo. And present here this evening also, we have alternates, John Henry. And Justin Torebili is not present, and Mark Calderella is not present right now either. Also up here, we have our zoning enforcement officer, Chris Costa, our clerk, Joanne Galley, five people in the room and two online. Right? Next on the agenda is regular business minutes of our previous meeting of the Monday, March 6. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of March 6? Not appearing. Mark Delmonico makes a motion to approve the minutes of Monday, March 6, as presented by Jerry Lewis. The discussion on the motion, all in favor of approving the minutes of March 6, 2023, as presented, signify by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Sandy. Next on the agenda this evening is correspondence. Have we any other than pertaining to agenda items? Roman numeral four, next site plan review, Atlas Outdoor application for modification of approved site plan to add 870 square feet to the existing storage building, removing a new porch. At 250 Middlesex Turnpike, a set switch map 52 lot 94 in the gateway business B4 district. Applicant owner 250 Middlesex Turnpike LLC agent Michael J. Hot, professional engineer. Action is to have a decision by April 27 of this year. Mr. Hot, online? Yes?
I was muted. I'm sorry. I'm sorry about that. I apologize. Um, so I'm, um, just for the record, I'm a licensed professional engineer and land surveyor with Summer Hill Civil Engineers with an office at 60 Wall Street in Madison. Um, I'm, I'm hearing a bit of an echo. Does the commission hear that also?
Yes.
Um, I don't, I don't think it's on my end. Well, it sounds like it may have gone away. Um, so Greg Nucci, the architect from Point One Architects is also here. Um, tonight, and I guess I could just give you a brief explanation. Actually, the, the, um, the language in the agenda kind of really explains it. This is a, this is a modification of, um, the approval that this commission granted, um, site plan approval uh, for the site at 250 Middlesex Turnpike for Atlas Outdoor. I, I can't remember exactly how long ago it was, but it may be a year or, or more. Um, and this particular application tonight, the modification is simply to renovate, um, one of the existing storage buildings that, that remained on the site as part of the original approval and also add, um, the 800 plus square foot addition to the building. Um, with the exception of the relocation of, of a trash receptacle enclosure, um, there are no other changes to the approved site plan. So Greg, could you, do you want to go over the, the renovation and the addition to the building?
Yes. Hello, everybody. Greg Nucci with Point One Architects. I hope everyone can hear me okay. I would like to share my screen if I could.
You should be able to.
Can everybody see my screen?
Yeah.
So, and Mike, um, if I say anything incorrect about the site plan, let me know. But this is, this was the approved, uh, site plan, uh, like Mike had mentioned, it might have been almost a year ago. And there's a little storage building out back here. Um, and I'll just show you a picture of it. This is what it currently looks like. It's a little nondescript building, which is basically this square on the left side of, of this building. And then you can see to the right, we are proposing to add about 800 square feet of, of storage for outdoor accessories and things like that. And there's also a little porch piece here that we've, uh, which was already previously approved, actually. Um, but that's, that's the extent of the addition. Now I'll show you kind of the architecture portion of it. Um, from left to right, uh, this is the existing building. Um, you can see that encompasses this piece here. And then we're adding the 800 square foot, um, addition as, as well as the porch. Um, but I think the porch was already approved prior to the, in the last application. But so it's really just this piece. Um, and going from, uh, kind of left to right, from the bottom side, I've, I've aligned the existing elevations with the proposed elevations. So you get a sense of, you know, what's actually being added. And you can see the existing west elevation, proposed west elevation. Um, and the part that kind of faces, uh, I guess the parking lot and the, in the sheds is the proposed east elevation where you can see the added porch and the storage addition here, the 100 square feet that actually has a cupola on it as well. Um, and, um, the proposed north elevation, you can, you know, it's just turned. So you can see, you can see the, yeah, the gable end kind of going away from you there. So these are the improvements that we're, you know, we're applying for in this, in this special permit modification. Um, if there are questions about any of it, I'm here to answer those. And I don't know if Mike, you want to?
Well, you have the architectural type elevation drawings up there. Page A1.0, the proposed west elevation and the proposed east elevation. Uh, can you explain why the cupola is on the right on both of those? You'll go left, keep going, keep up there. How is, how is it that the cupola could be on the right?
There may just be a mislabel. Hold on a second. Um.
One of the mislabeled.
So let's just look at the, so looking, if you're looking at the floor plan here, the, the, this is that elevation looking at that, uh, east. So the cupola is on the gable end. So the, the cupola is always on the big building. I guess that's the point, right? So, um, the cupola is on this, this is the addition, this is the addition, this is the addition. And then beyond this elevation, this is the addition. Um.
Well, the proposed east elevation, you're looking along the ridge line to the cupola.
Right here. Correct.
Yes. And the opposite of east would be the west elevation?
Uh, correct. I think it's mislabeled south.
Right. And then the one that's labeled west is also missed.
I see. I got you. Correct. I'm sorry. I, I mislabeled the, uh, the elevations, but the elevations are correct with regards to the plans.
Right. Just the compass directions are incorrect.
Correct.
Okay, this is, um, according to the, uh, application of a zoning commission review. Applicant information. This is a set switch map 52 lot 94 in a B4 district.
Yeah.
And in the B4 district, uh, left the adjacent block to the correction. Here to east, what, um, to the east and to the south, what district is on the other side of the property line?
I would defer to Mike Ott for that. He probably knows the answer.
So it's, um, it's labeled the, the zoning district boundary. Um, Greg, could you, I can't really see it. Can you zoom in on the top part of the site? Um, around the, around the building that we're talking about? Just zoom a window around that?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Sorry. Um. Oh, like, yeah, now I can see it. So the zoning, the zoning district boundary is not shown on this plan. It was shown on the, on, um, on the original plan. And, and if you give me one second, I can tell you. The zoning, the zoning district boundary.
I have it, Mike.
Oh, perfect. Yeah, zoning, there you go. There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah. Zoom in along the top, Greg, you'll see the, um, the dashed zoning district boundary.
All right, hold on a second. Residence AA dash one.
Yeah.
And I don't think it says on this side, Mike.
Now we're formally Carl Point Keltowski property. What district is that?
The same district that our site is in, which is labeled on the zoning district boundary line. B4, gateway business B4. Yeah.
Right. And, um, well, my question stems from, as you can see there, don't take that away, what I, what I noted was that on the the general plan, that the existing storage building goes a, a setback line through it. And if you, uh, yeah, there's, there's a line there that, yeah.
That's correct.
What is that line?
That, that is the setback line. Yes. It's this from a residential district.
And that would be 50 feet from the residence A district?
Yeah, I believe it's labeled as 50 feet. I can't read it.
It is. It's 50 feet. Yeah.
Yeah.
And that section of the building went for a variance prior to your previous approval.
So that was existing building.
So the, the building originally went for a variance prior to your site plan approval in March of 2022.
Which, which building got the variance?
This building.
This building.
The storage building. Correct. And the variance says that what, that the building?
For the residence district boundary line to make the improvements, but the proposed improvements now are outside of the residence district boundary.
Right. So my, well, that's a district.
Yeah, so.
But I guess I would, I would like to see what the variance actually grants a variance for. Because what I see is an indication that there was a building setback line that runs through the existing storage building.
It, it, it does. You can see it. I've copied this on my floor plan as well, Bob. The, uh, the variance was for this existing non-conforming structure that did go through that setback. But our new addition that we're proposing is within the setback boundaries. Um, so that was, that was of course done because we didn't want to go into any of the setbacks with anything new. But this was already granted as part of a variance. So.
So all of the expanded building, the, the new, the new building to be added to the existing storage building is all outside the setback?
Correct.
Yes.
On the right side there where it was at a porch?
Yeah. This, this side here, that's the left side.
All right. Okay. Well, on the right side, what part, yeah, what, is that just a, do I have that page? Okay, that says a proposed addition on the right side of, of that.
Yeah, we were just like a couple inches off of that corner. You can see it on Mike's site plan.
All right. So that's the new footprint right there.
Correct. This, this square we added.
If you go back to the previous one on page A1.0.
Yeah.
That, what that rectangle there that's outside, that's just a label? That's not part of the building?
I think you're looking at a dimension line, Bob.
Yeah, that's correct. That's a dimension line.
Okay. Well, it's a proposed addition, but it hasn't deserved dimension.
Yeah, I'll zoom in a little bit.
Prison number. Okay. Okay. So the new construction is outside the building setback line. And the new construction does not rely on a variance?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Done. Uh, the architectural, did the architectural review board, uh, agree on it?
They approved it on.
Got that this evening?
March 15.
And it says?
They approved it on March 15.
Right. They only be month 15 says, uh, memo, in this memorandum serves to report to the zoning commission, the architectural review board recommends approval of the above referenced matter as presented. So there's no exterior lighting on this building at all. That's typically they use, they have something to say about.
No, there is, there is, um, three of these, uh, full cutoff light fixtures on the front end, lighting up the signs. So.
Who snapped down let sign on the, on the east elevation over the doors? Is that the only exterior lighting on the building?
Correct.
Is if there's any lighting in the cupola, will that be from the top aiming downward or from underneath aiming upward?
Uh, I don't know that we've ever even spoke about that, but, um.
So the, any lighting that's in the cupola, the source of the light should not be visible at the property line. So there should be no chandelier hanging in the cupola part.
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
No.
No, not appearing. Uh, this is just a site plan review. We have any other referral information?
This was a modification. So we've received everything.
Okay. With regard to its, uh, compliance with the setback and the height and the exterior lighting being, um, uh, in line with the regulations in our, uh, in, we'll say the regulations, it's not, not transcaping, it's for the access and loading section that has the lighting. Right? Um, is there lighting for the, this, this site has more than 20 parking spaces. Is there lighting in the parking lot?
Um, Mike, maybe you can.
Yeah.
There is some lighting in the parking lot.
Yes, the original, the original approval shows lighting around the perimeter. Yes.
Okay, great. All right. Anything else? And the total coverage of the outdoor storage of the build, structures, buildings, which is a unique situation, does, does not exceed 75% of the slip. Correct?
Correct.
All the outdoor, all the sheds and structures on site, uh, are between the, the, the other, the first building, not this one, and the street and, uh, to the, over to the, you know, the northwest towards the driveway. There's a lot, a lot of sheds and buildings in there. But it does not cover more than, outside storage does not cover more than 75% of the lot. Right?
I, 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 I think that was part of the original approval on, on Bob. I, I, I would assume it's in compliance, but I, I don't know that either Greg or I would, would know. Um, but that was of course part of the original approval.
Well, it, from the street, there's a lot, a lot of sheds and buildings on the site. And I can tell by looking at this that the site has, uh, sufficient property between the original office building and this soon applied for expansion of the storage building that, um, there's still property that's not covered with outdoor storage of the products being sold. So we're just, just checking.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else? Anyone have any questions?
Yes, I got a question. In the zoning standard schedule, it just, it just confused me and maybe it's the same question that you had, but it talks about the rear property line existing was 13.4 feet, provided it's going to be 33. And the other property line was 2.15 down to 0.3 feet. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
Is that a result of new distances from the, the building?
Yes, yes. Um, Greg, Greg, can you actually go to the, not, is, yeah, this is the current site plan. Can you zoom in? Could you go back?
This one?
Yeah. Could you zoom in on the northern, could you zoom in on the northern part of the site? Where the building, the building that were the subject of the application, the storage building?
Yeah, hold on.
So that's good. That's good. So, um, can, can, can you see the, um, kind of T-shaped building up in the corner? That's got.
Yeah, this one. Yeah.
So, so the original setbacks in the zoning district, in the zoning standard schedule in the existing column reflected that building which has been removed. And, and in the proposed column, that's why the distance to the rear setback line got greater. As you can see, that old, that older building was a lot closer to the, the rear property line.
Right.
Yeah. So, so, yeah. So the, in the proposed column in the zoning standard schedule, um, closest distance to the, to the, um, sideline is that right, that right corner, kind of where Greg's cursor is.
Okay.
Yeah. And it used, it used to be, if you look at the old building, you can see close it was to the property line.
Right there.
Okay, that makes it clear. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
So we don't. I do, when you show me, I have A1.0, I have, uh, property survey and topographic survey, and I have a general plan. And uh, I don't have a, a plan that shows the site boundaries and, and the new construction at the same time. I have pictures. Anyone have a plan that shows the property line, the property boundaries and the new construction at the same time?
You, you do, Greg. You go to the general plan and can you zoom all the way out, Greg? That, that sheet shows the property boundaries.
Yes. And where's the new construction on that sheet? It's, it's that L-shaped rect, uh, box of rectangle. Okay.
Right where my cursor is.
What? And I've, I've been informed that the, uh, the Hall Point County Prestige Properties now is MSLA gap 53 gap two. And I'm, I'm told you're telling me that that's residential?
No.
It's B4.
That's B4.
B4. Yes.
So back to, yeah, John Henry and I, the question arises again, why is the setback? Oh, that's B, it's B4, isn't it? Really?
Along the road. Yes.
Oh, okay.
So along the road, it's B4. And then in the back, the boundary line changes into A because it's like 80 acres if you put them all together.
It's the, the scale per our zoning map, they thought that it doesn't show clearly where the front, your frontage, uh, before ends heading towards the river. Okay. Right. As long as it's B4, it's okay. All right. All right. Any, any other questions? None, none appearing then. I will, I will make a motion to approve the Atlas Outdoor application for modification of food site plan and 870 square feet to the existing storage building, including the new porch at 250 Middlesex Turnpike, a set switch map 52 lot 94 in the gateway business B4 adjusted because it is compliant with the existing regulations. And, um.
You want to condition the source of the light in the cupola is not to be visible from the property line?
Yes.
Watch the cupola.
Yes. Oh, yes. Any, any lighting in the cupola will not be, the source will not be visible outside.
Second.
Motion seconded by Jerry Lewis. The discussion on the motion, all is in favor of the motion to approve Atlas Outdoor, signify by saying aye. Aye, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Motion carries unanimously. Mark Delmonico, Jerry Lewis, Bob Friedman, Anne Marie Thorson, John, and Andy D'Essen. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing for Econo Lodge application for special exception use to construct a 4,680 square foot hotel addition for a three bedrooms, owner department, storage and motel office at 1750 Boston Post Road, set switch map 25 lot 4 in the gateway business B4 district. Uh, owner RR SAI LLC agent, attorney of good, Andrew Casella. This opens the public hearing to be continued or end or closed by April 17th. Mr. Casella?
Good evening, Andrew Casella, representing RR SAI LLC. Property owner with me tonight is Mayor Solanki, who's a member. Uh, this is 1750 Boston Post Road, which is the Econo Lodge. Uh, Mayor and his family own and operate, uh, the Econo Lodge building. Uh, they're seeking permission to expand the motel, uh, to construct a separate, um, owner's quarters and add additional room for motel office and storage. Uh, currently they live in motel rooms up on Third Board and his family. The property is, uh, 157,000 square feet and currently houses a 43 room motel. I think we should all be pretty familiar with it. I'll throw my screen and just show you a few things here. Uh, it's located on the south side of Boston Post Road, uh, between Cuckoo's Nest and. Uh, it's located on the south side of Boston Post Road, uh, between Pupu's Nest and basically the Summerwood Convenium. Uh, across the street from uh, Harvey Drive, a little bit away from uh, where the West Marine is. Um, takes way back, so it's this property here in the middle. Uh, it's a beautifully landscaped property, if you if you driven by, it's got the pond, which is well landscaped. Uh, that leads into parking area. Motel, uh, and a swimming pool. Uh, asphalt and gravel in the rear for uh, an extensive amount of parking that's provided for the site. Founded on the west by Sandy Point Road, which leads down to Summerwood and Four Seasons. Uh, and on the south by a little strip of um. Uh, Summerwood property. There are, there is a wetland system in the in the south of the property here. Uh, so we had to obtain um, uh, wetlands approval for the modification. Uh, which which we have done. Switching over to the site plan. So again, Route one is up at the top of the screen here, here's the large pond. The driveway coming in. Uh, there's a, there's a lot of existing vegetation, a lot of trees on on the property. One of the conditions of wetlands was required us to perform landscaping. Uh, quote-unquote mitigation on the west side, just to create a little bit of better wetlands habitat surrounding the pond. Uh, the parking area in front of the building, along the side, in the rear and on the east side. And then here's the main motel building. Uh, with the pool. So the application today is to uh, obtain permission. Uh, to construct a forty-six hundred square foot addition. On the rear with a direct connection to the motel. Uh, for owner quarters. And uh, motel office, its storage, laundry, different um, facilities that are part of it. Uh, as a motel, there somebody's required to be there uh, twenty-four hours a day if something happens with the property. Or or there's a need, as I said, uh, Mayor and his family currently uh, live in uh, motel rooms in the on the property. And are seeking to, um, you know, just expand. Uh, it's a two-story addition. The motel currently has existing twenty-two thousand five hundred and three square feet of gross floor area. And with this addition of forty-six hundred square feet, we're still going to be well in compliance uh, with the regulations. Regs allow up to sixty percent and with the addition, it's going to be seventeen point three percent. Uh, the addition will also add building coverage. It's over an area right now that's uh, gravel used for um, uh, basically parking and uh, vehicles traversing. Uh, the the near coverage will be nine point seven percent where forty percent is allowed. Lot coverage uh, will be thirty-seven point four percent where seventy percent is allowed, so we're we're remaining compliant with all the zoning. Uh, regulations regarding gross floor area coverage on parking. The parking will remain uh, at a hundred and eighteen spaces, uh, which is well in excess of the number required. However, um, one of the things that this hotel accommodates is larger vehicles, trailers, tree trucks, those kind of things. So when we need, when somebody needs to stay in place and has a larger vehicle, there's expanded room in the parking area to spread out. So, um, I think the zoning regs only require uh, fifty, fifty or sixty parking spaces. This has almost doubled, but in in during certain instances, it's needed just to be able to offer. Uh, larger trucks and and uh, folks with trailers to be able to um, utilize the utilize the motel. Um, this is located in the B four zone and um. Hotel slash motel is permitted use in the zone. And what we're seeking, this is as an accessory use. Um, owner's quarters are typical, especially for motels. Uh, all motels in Sabre, say, Pier One, uh, Super Eight, they all include owner's quarters as part of, as part of the motel. So we believe that this use is um, customary. And it's subordinate, obviously, it's much smaller than the twenty-two thousand square foot gross floor area, forty-three room uh, motel. And it does not only provide space for uh, Mayor and his family. Uh, but also provides additional room for an office, which they don't currently have. And and a lot of storage, which is, which is a big benefit for them. One of the things we talk. A lot about with the Wetlands Commission is trying to get as much usable basement space as possible, just to. To be able to provide storage for um. Uh, hotel, uh, furniture, equipment, uh, as it kind of comes and goes, so to speak. Uh, we talked a little bit about the Wetlands Commission approval. Uh, so that has been obtained. Uh, we also went to the Architectural Review Board. And uh, they asked for uh, uh, several mod- modifications slash conditions. Uh, the first is no removal of trees, which we agreed to, um, we're adding trees, we're adding street trees. Up on the Route one uh, side of the property. Uh, there's, there's seven street trees that are proposed along the Route one frontage. Um. The the, the west side along um. Sandy Point, there's already a number of trees in addition to uh, a fence. Uh, that that blocks off the parking, so it's very good screening. On the south side, again, there's, there's a significant vegetative buffer. Uh, located on the lawn, the south side, that's some of which is brush and some of which is is. Um, a a row of uh, rope throats and trees that have been planted. And then on the east side, we have a pond. Uh, which is, you know, very nice landscape area. Uh, up there, so no removal of trees is acceptable. Uh, use bone colored siding, we we had two options that we went in, the goal of this is to match. Um, the color of the existing building. And uh, that's, that's, we showed them the the color palette. And uh, we all agreed bone was the the closest match. Um, they asked for several modifications to the exterior. Um, so if you look at the elevations here. Uh, the existing building has some curved roof lines. So they asked that these overhangs be curved. So for example, this is the view that you're going to see from Route one. Now, there's fairly significant trees and vegetation in between Route one and this building, but. This is what the Route one look would look like, so you can see that the um, the porch has. The the covering on the porch has been rounded. Um, which is what they requested. There's another. On the east elevation. Um. There's another rounded porch, uh, a roof here. And then the. Dark sky compliant lighting has been provided, so there were are some wall packs. We provided a new um, full spec that allows for a full cutoff. Uh, to, these going to be, these are going to be placed in the rear of the building. Nail out for a full cutoff. And. The final was to stack the windows. I don't have the the previous elevation, but you can see here, there's symmetry. On this north elevation which faces Route one, where all the windows are stacked on top of each other. So that was uh, the other comment that the Architectural Review Board had that we've agreed to and and put into the plans that. You guys have, we were able to make those changes before, uh, before the fact that went out. Uh, so that's the sum and substance of the presentation. Uh, what we're asking for is a modification of the existing special infection. Uh, through all its applications to proceed.
Can you move the date of that A R B meeting?
Yeah.
February twenty-seventh.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
It actually was continued in a three sense.
There are presently uh, existing owner's quarters on site?
Yes.
And where are they?
Third floor.
And what is to become of them? If this addition is approved and this. Is available as owner's quarters?
They're part of the forty-three motel rooms.
Where is that on the floor plan?
It's not, the existing, we don't have, we didn't provide the existing floor plan for the uh, for the motel, we just provided the new.
The the new construction has two floors.
Correct.
But we only have one floor floor plan.
Uh. Could have two. There only one in your packet. It's going without.
Uh, first floor, there's partial first floor plan.
Okay.
A one oh one.
Yeah, so let me, I'll tell you what I have, I I do have two floor plans, I don't know why this isn't in the packet. So here's the existing building with the connection. I can zoom in here a little bit. This is what you have, which is the first place, man. Uh, it shows the living area, the the laundry, the office, prayer room, storage.
Yes, I have that.
Here's the second floor plan. Um, which, again, there's, there's no second floor on the connection. It's just a new roof below. Uh, master bedroom, hallway, baths and uh. Bedroom deposit at the end. Roof below, roof below. So that's, that's, that's basically where the 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 quarters will be.
Right, what's the square footage of the owner's quarters in the existing?
I don't know.
Is it left, left the four thousand square feet?
Yes.
Yes. And so. In terms of the. What you call typical or customary owner's quarters in a motel. Is now to be over four thousand square feet. While in section thirty-four point three of our regulations on the B four district. Yes, prohibited uses in the B four at thirty-four point three point one is a dwelling. Except as otherwise permitted in this district, hospital or sanitary. I don't see any other uh, regulations in the B four district. Which would allow for uh, owner's quarters of this magnitude in the B four district.
Well, as an, as an accessory use. There's no qualification on size, other than that it'd be clearly subordinate to the principal use.
Accessory uses, where where is that? In the B four district?
Yes.
We have, we have permitted uses. Special exception uses and prohibited uses.
Yeah.
Are no accessory uses listed in the B four district?
Uh.
Thirty-four point one point eighteen, thirty-four point one point eighteen.
Thirty-four point one.
Thirty-one point four, no.
Thirty-four, it's on the top of the second page. Accessory uses customary with and incidental to any previously mentioned permitted.
Alright, but that does not apply to special exception use.
But we're, no, we're a, we're thirty-four point one point twelve is a hotel or motel. That's a permitted use.
Right.
So that's permitted use. So it does apply to that.
And this is a four, a four thousand square foot addition for our owner's quarters is. Uh, incidental. For an accessory use to a previous. We may come back to that.
Yeah.
Um. This is the B four district?
Yes.
And the Summerwood property located to the south?
Yeah.
Of this property is what this.
Uh, well, there's a strip of land that's in the B four. Uh, and then beyond that strip of land is uh, becomes the Residence A District.
So, uh, which. Which boundary of this property? Um. On the south side, what what, what district does this property bound on the south side?
B four.
B four. And where? It's just, it's labeled as the owner is Summerwood associate.
Correct.
That's correct, right?
Yeah. So the strip of B four and then it becomes the residential.
Alright, how wide is the strip?
Uh. Approximately forty feet.
Approximately four?
Forty, four zero.
Forty, four zero, alright. Because we investigated the boundary in the last application regarding residential property. Where the building setback would have been different.
Yes.
Alright, and if this building, uh, proposed building is. More than fifty feet from the residence district property, then that's in compliance.
Yes, that, if you want, just to clarify, I don't think it's on the plan. Um. We could have the the plan updated to show. That residence district boundary with the setback applied, just to confirm that the building's outside of it.
That, that would be a good. With regard to what might end up between the proposed building and the property line for this lot. At present, there appear to be uh, fifteen parking spaces that. To be designated for proposed aisle way drive.
Yes.
Alright, so this is um. Existing fifteen parking spaces. And the existing, um. That ten feet, that ten foot perimeter buffer at that south bit boundary? No. And so the existing vegetative buffer on the south. Boundary of this property is non-contouring. And so where it says. The fifteen parking spaces would be designated for a proposed aisle way drive, do we have a? A picture of that, what that would look like? And the resulting perimeter buffer, vegetative boundary. On the south property line.
Uh, we we might, we, there are, you can see on the plan here that there are uh, trees along that strip of land.
Yes, but presently it's non-conforming. And if there's to be new construction, there becomes that, that becomes an opportunity to reduce the non-conformity on the site. And it appears that the full ten foot vegetative buffer on the south boundary of the property could be accommodated. And still have. A proposed aisle way drive between that and the proposed building.
Yes, um, so right now there is thirty-four point two feet. Um, or no, excuse me, there is twenty-eight point five feet between the the closest point of the building and the property line.
Yeah.
Um, so with the. Strip of land, which I think is about eight feet. Um, that's existing now, and I I don't disagree, it's not conforming, um. To make that any larger would really constrict the travelway.
No, it's twenty, there's twenty, there's twenty-eight and a half feet now.
Yes.
If the vegetative buffer were increased, reduction in the non-conformity, it was still allowed for. A two-lane, two-directional lane of twenty-four feet.
Yeah, here's, to answer your first question about the photo, here's what we're talking about. Um, it's not completely clear. But this is the area that's behind the motel existing.
Right.
So it's very landscaped, again, I understand only a strip of that is on our property. But then there's wetlands to the, to the rear. Uh, so it's, it's heavily vegetated all the way back through the Summerwood property.
Right, but this area that you're showing with the uh. Um, building, existing hotel on the left?
Yes.
That is the corner, corner of the building on the, on the far end, where that light pole is. That would be where this building would be located on the ground, between that existing.
Is this not the right, am I not at the right picture?
So this is moving, uh, will be at the end of the, so the proposed building will be connected to the end of the existing building. Not this way, the other way.
Let me, let me go to the next picture, maybe I have the wrong picture.
Alright, let's you, let's, it says, there's an existing electrical vault there, let's use that as a reference point. Somewhere on. On the backside of the existing hotel. It says there's an existing wall and an existing electrical vault. That's where, that's on the left in the, in.
That's, that's the north.
So, yeah, right there.
There, see above, in the, just to the right of the building, there's a light pole, and then there's a white thing. Obscured apart by bushes. What is that white thing? If you could zoom in, is that the wall near the existing electrical vault?
Electrical wall is. Yeah, it just.
Yeah, what is this white thing here?
Sorry. So that's the wall, uh, right here is the electrical wall.
Yeah, right below the the lamppost is the electrical wall?
Right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
So, so this is the, this is, on the right-hand side is, is this over here, right?
Correct, right, and we, we have a, and a shoulder right here. Correct, right, and we, we have a, and a shoulder right here, and a sort of curve is all which is energy, I think it's a willow hybrid tree, and also we have, uh, Japanese knuckle trees. All those ones that they see.
Right.
So from the existing hotel wall, to the electrical vault is a short distance. And if I were looking at a, a west elevation of the proposed new building, the existing electrical vault would overlap with the northern corner of that western edge of the proposed new building, and the proposed new building would be sitting on what appears to be a, a drive, and a, a, a vehicle accessway there.
Yes, some grass.
And so the center of this pic photo you're showing us would then be occupied by the proposed building.
Yes.
And so, um, what we have here is that the, the plans that show existing parking spaces
Don't exist.
are going to be under the, uh, uh, under this new building and with the the, the, this proposed aisle way drive would have to be on the right side where you said it's heavily vegetated.
Right, it, but there is enough room. The, the picture may not be doing it justice, but when you look at the site plan, the edge, you can see the catch basin to the south. On the eastern side of the new building is a catch basin, so that's
Well, the, remember.
that will be over here somewhere.
Yeah, there, yes, and, and the, the tall trees on the right side of this photograph would not be impacted.
None, none of the trees will be impacted.
They, they would not be impacted except as to a portion of the, uh, the proposed access aisles for vehicles, so where you're, where the cursor is now the hand, that is the area that would be impacted by this twenty, what's shown is twenty-eight and a half feet.
No, well, no, no, nothing's, the building will be in this location here.
Yes.
Let's just say, and then there will still be twenty-eight feet until you get to the vegetation here.
Um. Okay, yes. And so in that twenty-eight feet, you could have twenty-four feet of access aisle, and you can add four and a half feet if you, if you need to, to the existing vegetative buffer.
But then.
If the existing vegetative buffer is, as you say, four feet, you only need to add six feet to it.
But the, the issue with that is, people, the twenty-four foot aisle would be right up against the building. Right, like, you typically don't want to have an aisle drive right against the building. So that's why they wanted a buffer of a few feet off of the proposed building.
Well, then make the building smaller.
Thank you.
Or move the porch to the west face of the building. Proposed covered porch over balcony is the offending part of the structure that prevents sufficient reduction of the non-compliant.
I'm confused, where are the existing parking places? I don't, that is show?
No, they're just, um.
It's just not the name.
It's a gravel.
It's just what?
Gravel.
It's just gravel?
Yes.
Yeah.
Does it look, and they drive through this, right through here?
Yes, so we do, we have plenty of parking spots in front of the building, usually, uh, there are only any big truck or trailers on their park area, but they just want to make a driveway, as a driveway, and they just make a one-way drive, they come around the building and come this way, we don't see like an across traffic, most of the times, like a one-way, they just come around and
Yeah, that's very nice.
They're packing.
So there is no formal parking places there designated, okay? No formal designated parking place, like this shows here.
Correct.
Right.
So that this is, this is incorrect.
It's not incorrect, it's just they're not, they couldn't fit them there, and then, so you've got the wetlands on the other side too, so you don't really want to pave. Yeah, you know, up against the property line.
Question, will we make the southern buffer ten feet? That what the question is?
Yeah. But if the building, if the proposed covered porch over balcony was not there, there would be sufficient distance from the new edge of the proposed building to eliminate the non-conformity in at least that area. The non-conforming perimeter buffer could be eliminated to an even greater degree towards the east. To the east of the new proposed building, the perimeter buffer is not in compliance.
You mean on the southern line, but to the east of the building?
On the southern property line.
Yes.
Yeah, you have a non, we have a non-conformity that could be addressed.
But then you'd have to remove the proposed landscape area.
Have to move.
The proposed landscape area
Where?
up against the building.
Yeah. Bob, do I see your scale for a second?
Bob, so he wants to borrow.
Pardon?
Ed wants to borrow this.
Go ahead, yeah.
I'm gonna read.
Good.
He's in the bag.
We could reduce the non-conformity to a, to a large degree. One thing that prevents reducing the non-conformity to as much as would be practical and feasible is the proposed covered porch over balcony. That's not a necessary portion of the proposed building owner's quarters. That could be moved to a different face of the building, thereby providing for that, like thirty, thirty-two, thirty, thirty-three feet at that point, and a twenty-four feet is, uh, the, the existing perimeter buffer, oh, the existing perimeter buffer appears to be ten feet.
Yeah, of course. We're sliding.
If the existing perimeter buffer is ten feet, then that's, that's all great, then you just need to provide a twenty-four foot wide aisle. And that can be done.
It's twenty-four, thirty-four, the edge of the building to the property line, right?
What's that?
Thirty-four two, twenty-eight five on the other side.
Other side.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight five on the other side. So if you leave, uh.
So twenty-four is a typical drive aisle, so that's where he's getting the four and a half feet.
That.
Would could it keep centered to the perimeter?
That's okay.
The existing perimeter buffer as required in our regulation is at ten feet. Then, if you need to have a proposed aisle way drive here, that should be twenty-four feet wide, to be, to comply with the aisle. In order for that to happen, then, the closest the building can be to the property line would be ten feet plus twenty-four, thirty-four feet. And it, and it, and it's, at the midpoint of the building, it's thirty-two feet. Well, that's, that's as good as you can do with, or else you just make the building two feet narrower and get full compliance. But you can have a great reduction in the non-conformity by not having the proposed covered porch over balcony on the south wall, but on a different wall of the building.
Okay. Are there other questions, comments?
Uh, the architectural review boards specifically said, uh, they wanted stack the, do we have the stacked window on the north elevation?
Yes.
That'd be, okay, and the other one was all lighting is dark sky compliant?
Yes.
And you showed us the cut sheet from a, a manufacturer of something that is dark sky compliant?
Yes.
Because I, I think I also have cut sheets from Keystone Light, that, that showed non-cut-off.
Yeah, the spotlight is going away.
Yeah, yeah, all right, so all of these that show non-cut-offs are part of this earlier application material, are, are not, no longer part of this application.
Correct. Yep.
Welcome. Okay. And you submit the second floor floor plan?
Yes.
I didn't get, did anyone on the clinician get that?
No.
No, there's missing.
Is there a change in the signage?
No change in signage.
Um.
Oh, yeah, I showed it to him.
I don't know if he saw it.
Yeah, we went through the second floor plan earlier.
Right.
You did.
All right, and, uh, and. Anyone have any questions? Public hearing, great one presented in the room, wishing to, or online, I'm going to go, going to speak.
Got it, yes.
Before you go on.
Uh, I know this sounds sticky, but is, is, have you looked at, is there any effect on this, on the second system of this addition?
No, we have, uh, we've received, um, the B one hundred A approval from CRAD for this.
Okay. Sorry, thank you.
That's, we need that to get here.
All right, everyone in the room tonight, or online, wishing to speak in favor of or in opposition to this application? Raise your hand, no? Anyone online?
No.
All right, any, any further questions, any further input from?
Let me just speak with my five for a second.
Yeah.
Yes. If you remove that. Yes. Although it's one.
Remind me, because I'm, I forget.
Do they need to be able to back? Yeah. Which is that, the sign? No, the whole, the whole ten feet across the whole southern boundary. Um, yes, it's, it's five feet.
Okay.
Close on it. Yeah. Okay. They'll agree, they'll agree to the ten foot landscape buffer on the southern side.
That's what's existing.
No, it, make it, to make it compliant, they'll agree to.
It is, it, well, I, now that I have the proper scale, the existing perimeter buffer is ten feet on the south property line.
Are you sure? What scale do you have?
Uh, twenty. Over there in the bottom right?
Yeah.
One and twenty. And it's supposed to be ten. It's a, it's a perimeter buffer, it's not in the B four district, it's not listed here. Right? Help, I'm sorry, it's, it's, it's twenty.
Five feet.
One inch, it's only five, oh, yeah, well, it should, I'm sorry.
We'll agree.
It's only five. Different scale, all right, all right, so it should be ten, and if it's ten, then you have enough room for a ten, a one-way access aisle of sixteen feet, and you wouldn't have to move
anything.
the porch, and you could keep the landscape area, so just make it a one-way aisle in, in that direct, in that segment at sixteen feet, not less than sixteen feet wide. And you can comply with the required perimeter buffer at a full ten feet, yes, okay. That's. All right, anyone have any questions? Anyone else? Online, the good room, it's over, no, there's no other input from anything else?
Referrals were sent out February seventeenth, we talked about the architectural review board, I did not stand into the planning commission, it's really not a big pictured project. Um, you have your help, you have A R B, I don't expect any other referral responses. No letters from the public.
Okay.
No comments from the public?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for a common lodge application for a special exception use to construct a forty-six eighty square foot hotel addition for a three bedroom owner's apartment, stores and motel office at seventeen fifty Boston Post Road, Assessor Farm twenty-five Lot Four, and a gateway business before district. There's a second, the motion, Jerry Lewis seconded the motion to close the public hearing and discussed all of the favor of closing the public hearing, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously, none opposed. And, um, do we wish to deliberate on this this evening?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay, then, um, I'll make a motion to approve the application for a special exception use for a common lodge at seventeen fifty Boston Post Road, because it meets the general standard with, with modifications. It meet, then we'll meet the general standards of our regulations and comply with the, um, pertinent regulations regarding perimeter buffer landscape area. That will be changed from the plans to ten feet and the vehicle access aisle between the proposed building and property line will be not less than sixteen feet wide.
Second.
Anything else? All lighting will be according to A or B recommendation of full cutoff downcast. But it's not compliant.
The one thing that didn't make it onto the agenda is, but it's included, there's a CAM, so because it's consistent with all applicable coastal policies, it makes all reasonable measures to mitigate adverse impacts.
Okay, it doesn't, oh, it's, it is in the CAM?
There is a CAM application, there is a CAM, but it did make it onto the agenda, so I just, I just read, I just read your line.
For you.
All right. I have, I have, I have, you got it?
She just said it.
You do, okay.
Because it's consistent with all applicable coastal policies and makes all reasonable measures to mitigate adverse impacts. I've written a few times in the permits.
Okay, I'll second that.
Jerry Lewis seconded the motion. Uh, any discussion on the motion? We have, um, after going to training, we have an obligation with regard to approving the special exception applications to be specific about the things that are favorable and to be queer about stipulations and conditions. So, that's in, it's in the motion now. Any, any further discussion, all those in favor of the motion to approve the common lodge application for a special exception at seventeen fifty Boston Post Road, signified by saying aye. Aye, and opposed, none opposed?
None opposed.
Any abstentions? No, well. No, I'm just, all right, here, quick to go. Next on the, next on the agenda is Banbury Cross. An application to modify planned residential development uh, to allow for unit owners to install decks, android sunrooms, or multiple units being two, three, four, five, six, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, thirty, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-four, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, and fifty, when requested by the unit owners by application for certificate of zoning compliance at three, six, seven Main Street, Assessor's Map twenty-two Lot two fifty-one in Residence A District Postal Area Management. All right, this opens the public hearing for this application, and my first question is, why is, is this a public hearing for the modification to such a condominium development?
Because it's my fault. Because, because I started the trouble, so, um. um, our condo regulations are no longer in existence, they're PRDs, we have a number of non-conforming condominium associations in the past practice of previous zoning officers as when someone wanted to put a deck or a sunroom on, they would look at the nearest setbacks, and if it met the setback, they would approve them. The issue was that this practice never tracked ground coverage or title wetlands setbacks or a number of different setbacks, so I would say at least five years ago, I began discussions with Banbury because I know where some of these setbacks were, I had no idea about the coverage on the site. The, the file is pretty much a drawer large of unit two put this on, unit three put that on, and they said, we really need to kind of get this into perspective. Because I don't know anymore where we stand with coverage. So, this is the result. And Attorney Casillas here can add on to it some more, but at least this way it's a basis for the future as people want to add on, and it also makes it uniform, so some of our newer developments that are PRDs in the past, you've kind of done a blanket approval saying the following units can have a deck or a sunroom in this area, and then rather than have each individual unit owner come in to modify the PRD, you designated the authority to me, as long as it was consistent, they could come in with a certificate of zoning compliance, they obviously have to have permission from the condominium association. So this is really one giant housekeeping project for the town and for Banbury, and I'm very grateful that they finally, they've agreed to do it and that they brought this into us.
Yeah, why are some units not included in this list?
Because they already have, they already have. Banbury had, Banbury, the Banbury Association had to go through and make decisions as to who was having decks or who had a deck or who had a sunroom, so it, it was, as I said, a cleanup project.
This appears to be a blanket approval for all of the listed units to expand to have a deck and or, I mean, without both. Deck and sun porch at both at one hundred ninety-six square feet. And if they were all to avail, all of the listed units were to avail themselves of the additional one hundred ninety-six square feet times two, you have the, um, all the setbacks and wetlands and other regulations would result in compliance.
That's, yes. Correct.
And this is restricted to this property and not subject to other detached accessory buildings and things that are also, um, possible in this resi- this Residence A District?
Correct. So, so typically, a- and this started, I think, with Four Seasons and North Cove. The condominium developments were built out. And then someone said, gee, I want a deck, so they came and they said, zoning commission, I want to modify the whole PRD for a deck. And then the neighbor says, well, I want a deck too. So rather than going through and having fifty approvals of minor modifications to the PRD, this is one way and how we handled it with our other PRDs in town to just kind of do a blanket approval, and then each individual one would have to come to me to make sure it meets the title wetlands, it meets the setbacks, and now I can do that because we actually have it all on one plan, and one of our clerks is sorting through painfully the giant file drawer and trying to make each unit an actual file for the unit as to what's happened. So we'll have some mass organization of the files, so.
A hundred and ninety-six grossly area for a sunroom would, uh, add to grossly area of each unit. And there's no dimensions that result in a hundred and ninety-six square feet. Could be fourteen by fourteen, it could be twenty by, what is it, nine, nine point eight feet or something like that. But as long as it's a hundred and ninety-six square feet, the shape, circular, rectangular, is.
Yeah, and, and this is a condo, so all of the space outside of the walls of the units is common area, right, or limited common, so the, the first step actually is to get approval from the condo association to do this. So the board has to approve it. And the, you know, the board has said, we want, we're approving fourteen by fourteen, but from a zoning perspective, you're right, it's one ninety-six, or if, if you want both, it could be up to three ninety-two of coverage.
Right. So if a deck is less than six inches off the ground, it would not count as coverage.
Correct.
And so this pre-grants approval for decks higher than six inches off the ground.
If they comply with setbacks.
No, I'm worried about the six inches off the ground. Deck would not, would only be regulated by the condos and not, not zoning in terms of coverage.
But, correct, but the condominium association would have to approve patios and anything less than six inches and change their condo documents and amend their maps and do all of that, even if it wasn't a structure according to our regular.
Is there an upper limit to the height of a deck? Granted here in this procedure before the zoning commission. Remember, we have, we, we I mean, how, how high could the deck be? I know it's subject to the condo association. The sunroom would presumably be attached to the building. And the sunroom height would be condo regulated, not higher than the existing building, I would hope, but we could put that in as a condition. Right, and a deck can be higher than six inches and would count then in terms of coverage. Whereas if it were lower than six, it would not. But to what degree does the zoning commission wish to regulate the height of the deck?
I think it
a maximum.
I think it depends on the grade, I mean, if you have a unit that has a severe slope, I, I think it's difficult to I mean, I don't think we're gonna have any decks that are five feet off the ground, but I mean, there's gonna be varying degrees.
But the height of the deck should not exceed two feet higher than it exists, than a finished floor of the interior where it's attached. You could have a step up to the deck, and that could accommodate a foot or so, and the deck would be even higher. And this area is pretty level, it's not like there are units which are up against a hill where they would need a deck to be higher than the finished floor of the interior. Most decks would be at or lower than the floor in the house. And so the zoning commission could set an upper limit relative to the finished floor of the unit. Right?
You could, I don't really think anybody wants, there's a lot of walk and step up. And I think it'd probably be a building
This is a condominium association that consists of forty the highest, the highest number here was fifty. You know, the plans, the fifty the highest number?
No, fifty-two, there's a duplex, D one, fifty-two are duplex.
And so this condo consists of fifty-two different units. There is in town, I know of a condo which is a single-family house. And so, one, if we apply interpretations of regulations and set conditions for an approval for fifty four? Fifty-two units, then a different condo in town, which could be as little as one single-family house could ask for the same. And so if we are limited in what we grant here, then we establish limitations on what is the starting point for a different condo to apply similarly.
So we've already done this for other condos. This isn't the first, this is just an older condominium association that's coming up to speed, and I know which particular condo you're addressing, so I think it would just make, I think it would make sense just to say you can only have first floor decks.
Okay.
And that would not second story decks, and I don't think the
First floor, there could be one deck for serving the first floor. Alright, so we don't get into a, a two-tiered deck, a deck over a deck?
Or you don't have a sunroom with a deck over it, I, I understand where you're going with this. And I don't think that's
We're not on ninety-six square feet of deck serving the first floor.
That makes sense.
Alright, just trying to see what, what you're creating here has other possibilities, and one can imagine a lot of different. Okay, um, on the we've been recording zoning location survey record has couple of things that are with a black heavy dot. It says like existing, the luminous concrete driveway typical, uh, existing wood deck typical or existing patio typical. Those which have existing decks, patios, or I didn't see any existing sunrooms on here, but, um, if there was one of those as well, if they have an existing one, does, does this application tonight entitle them to add another?
No.
The limit is one deck, one sunroom?
Yes, okay. And it doesn't even entitle people who have a deck that's less than one ninety-six to get up to one ninety-six. It doesn't entitle that.
That's up to, well, that, there, there's approval for it, but that's up to the condo.
No, the approval wouldn't. Because if the people have a deck, they're not on the list of units that are approved.
So there's this very detailed list of every unit that's included as part of the application?
Right, okay.
So that
Only those units are covered, I guess, okay, thank you.
Yes. Three of them, yeah, and there are, I'm noticing on here too, for example, like unit twenty-four, unit eleven, and unit twelve actually shouldn't be included in the approval because they have summer deck. I don't know why they are on the list here, let me just double check. Yeah, eleven, twelve, twenty-four.
Twenty-four is zero, it's just the
Yeah, so they should
Twenty-three is sunroom and deck.
Yes, so unit twenty-four isn't entitled to anything.
And it states that.
Yeah, I don't know why it's on here, but then there's a typo on eleven and twelve. If they have a sunroom and deck, and then it says proposed deck, but then zero and zero, so eleven, twelve, and twenty-four should be removed from the approved list. They cleaned it up.
But it's proposing no new coverage.
Correct, the numbers are the same.
It just shouldn't say any proposed structure, we just need to clarify.
Those should
Remove anything where that would do.
Eleven, twelve, and twenty-four are to be removed. But the numbers won't change, the coverage in the won't change.
But fifty-two is not on here, so should that be?
No, that, the, a- anything, like a lot of them aren't, unit one, unit seven,
one fifteen, twenty, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty-one to thirty-five, there's a whole bunch that are not
Yeah.
Okay.
So the, the, the units that say three ninety-two, they're gonna
Correct, they could. They could, that's the blanket approval that we're asking for, is to allow that person to come up with a plan with a survey, show it to Chris with their unit, with the property line, with the, with the wetlands in the back, and say, here's where we're gonna put this, here's where we're gonna put that, up to three ninety-two, and she can improve it administratively.
Yeah. And then it would be on the survey and go back to Banbury, and then they're gonna keep this consistent, so we don't end up in this situation ever again.
Okay, this is a, uh, public hearing on this application for the PRG modification, the running president of the room or online wishing to speak in favor of or in opposition to this application, if so, raise your hand. Online, you can hit the raise your hand button at the bottom. None appearing? Do you have any other referrals? Any other inputs?
No.
Okay. Uh, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for Banbury Crossing, modify the PRD to allow for unit owners
Second.
Seconded by jury votes. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion to close the public hearing, signified by saying aye. Aye, motion carries unanimously, none opposed, no abstentions. We wish to deliberate on this this evening?
Yes.
Yes, we do, okay. And we'll make a motion to approve the Banbury Crossing application to modify the plan reservation, re- residential development approval to allow for unit owners to install one deck for dwelling unit serving the first floor only and or, and or sunrooms for units two, three, four, five, six, eight, nine, ten, thirteen, fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five, twenty-six, thirty, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-four, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, and fifty. When requested by the unit owners by application for certificate of zoning compliance to our zoning enforcement officer. This being at three sixty-seven Main Street, Assessor's Map twenty-two, lot two fifty-one in Residence A District.
This is a
Proposed modification to this PRD informs to the general standards in addition to any special standards. And it is appropriate and harmonious and desirable in the district. And this project is approved as submitted, amended, as submitted because it is consistent with all applicable coastal policies and makes all reasonable efforts to mitigate adverse impacts.
Second.
Seconded by jury votes. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve the Banbury Crossing modification to PRD at three, six, seven Main Street, signified by saying aye. Alright, motion carries five, zero, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, alright, have a good night.
Really represented the staff before.
So, I need to go very quickly, um, yay. Curry Queen, ninety-three Elm Street, um, they're requesting a minor modification to add an eight-by-eight cooler to the on the side of the property line over by the stop and shop entry, and it actually, they've also agreed to extend the fencing there um, to hide the exposed AC mechanicals and so forth. It's pretty minor. Yeah. So you can handle it administratively.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, and same with Daniel's propane as they've moved along, um, and this is actually a site plan, they want a six-by-six mechanical building to put the electrical, um, equipment for the propane tanks. So we approved the tanks in twenty twenty-one. Not in the setbacks, um.
Buffer zones, I mean, handle that administratively.
Chris could do that, yeah. Yes, good. I thought you were checking.
No, 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 I don't
So, uh, just to, uh, Bob and I worked on some letters to businesses and property owners about our new sign regulations and COVID signage, how it's no longer permitted, and how we're gonna begin our enforcement on campaign, and we were lucky enough to fit it into a mass mailing with the assessor, so three hundred and sixty-five letters will go out in that mailing, so that was a pretty huge outreach program, and we need to thank the assessor's office for allowing us to add that insert. We do have an interesting proposal for a battery storage energy facility. So myself and the fire marshal met um with a company called Blue Wave Energy. And it was a preliminary discussion before they go to the Connecticut Siting Council, which means that the zoning commission has no authority over this. And the proposal is to place twenty-seven foot by eight foot by twenty-foot containers. So kind of think of a shipping container, that's the best way. So imagine twenty of those um is for lithium battery storage. I guess this is connected with EverSource. You would connect the container to the grid. And it also would have diverters um and there would be um. So what would happen is they would connect and they would store power during uh, low
Usage.
usage times. And then give power back to the grid during high usage time. So I think like, you know, in the.
Was that Kitty, was somebody here a year ago?
No, this is, that was the FragMities, the guy who was burning FragMities. This is a completely different thing, um.
And we have no say in this, is that what you said?
We can, we can say something to the fire mar, I mean, to the sighting council, but the building official, fire marshal and I are pretty concerned because as you've seen with Tesla cars and so forth, they're it's very difficult, if not impossible at times, to stop lithium.
Yes.
Um, ion batteries and fires. And um typically, the procedure is to let them burn versus.
If there's many in the storage container and one cell starts to burn and they let them burn, how many containers burn?
Well, I mean, that, there's a number of questions that they're working on answering, but you know, they, it doesn't appear from what we saw. We don't have all the specs that the twenty containers are fire-rated. They do have a air handling system that's in them to cool them, um.
And what did he say, anywhere?
Right now, they're looking to put them at the Endrich Farm on Middlesex Turnpike. Um, which is surrounded by woods and then there's residential neighborhoods, so they're concerned, obviously. Middle, across from Oceanside Auto.
Is that in the, is that in the aquifer protection district?
There's no wetlands, there's.
The aquifer protection district, no.
So the, and I mean, there's not really much we can do. So anyway, it's just something to watch. It has a huge generation of power. The fire marshal and building official are, you know, looking into it a little bit more, but it seems to be a unique location in a more residential-like commercial area than an industrial area where you think they would want to locate.
Under what use is this proposed in our existing regulation?
We don't have the authority to regulate it, it's by the sighting council.
This is the sighting council?
Yeah, they really, these folks came to us.
So we don't, so we don't get a say.
You don't get a say, but I thought I would give you uh, just some insight onto the idea. And this was a preliminary discussion for us to provide support to these, this company and to get.
So a question for the fire marshal, fire department. Are they equipped? Are they prepared in the event of a, of a burning lithium hydride or lithium ion storage facility? And part of that question then becomes, um, what's a proper firefighting um application in in such a fire? And is that current polyfluorinated substances that prefer ever chemicals?
So at this point, the fire marshal, the building official and I don't have all those specifications. Um. We don't believe it's something that emergency services could handle at this point. It's not something that you just pour water on and it goes away. And typically, um, the procedure is that you let, you let them burn.
What's the name of the company?
Blue Wave Energy. And they're, they're actually a solar power company and there's really nothing on their website about it. So this, I guess, just opened up in the state of Connecticut and it's a program with EverSource. Um, and the idea is to, you know, store as much energy off of the grid and then it.
Bounce it back in when needed.
Bounce it back in and that'll allow us to go green faster and charge more lithium battery cars and other.
Have they done this anywhere else in Connecticut?
There's none in Connecticut. Um, I did find out there may be a facility that, similar facility, not from these folks um in the Cape. So I guess they use it for um, the Cape to when they have high power demand. The facility in the Cape can bring power back to the grid. But I guess that particular facility uh, can only, and we're kind of looking into all of that, um. But the generation power back in, I guess, is only two hours of power to put back in to.
To they, in store, they can only put two hours.
Hours of storage.
That's it. How far from the road would these trailers be?
I believe it was two or three hundred feet. They have some, there are some separation distances, not for us.
If you're going to let this burn and you have to close Middlesex Turnpike, that's a pretty significant impact.
I'm more concerned with wooded areas.
I know, yeah.
If you have something that's going to go for an open burn and you're going to let the facility burn unless there's some other solution. And you have a forested wooded area nearby. And residential neighborhood as well.
Yeah.
So anyway, I just thought I would tell you that.
They should put that to DOT property. The state, the state already owns that.
This is, I guess, through EverSource, so.
Right, yeah, well.
This isn't like a done thing, it's.
No, this is, this is something new and they've reached out to the town to get our buy-in and support. So they're getting some more specifications in. So anyway, and they'll go to the Connecticut Siting Council.
So let the sighting council work it out with EverSource and the state. They put it on the state property, which is near the, near Route Nine. Everywhere it should.
The zoning commission doesn't have a say in it, but I thought I'd tell you that this is something going on.
My opinion on the state's ability to do zoning is not very high.
Okay, so uh, just one other thing is I'm still working um with Westbrook and Fenwick on that coastal resiliency grant. Uh, we did put out a request for proposals, um. We received a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from the twenty twenty-two Long Island Sound Future Fund. I'm working right now and making application to C Grant for a grant writer to, for Westbrook and Old Saybrook to go for the twenty twenty-three grant, which would be supplemental and the focus would be to determine if tie gates are useful tools in advancing sustainability and resiliency. And we thought that we could use the Chucker Beach Tiegate as an example of a tie gate to study. And then we would also investigate benefits, you know, to having a tie gate because the cold spring, brook marsh watershed in Westbrook, there's been, you know, some issues there with beach erosion and yeah, marsh starvation and so forth. So we're hoping I can get the second grant writing
Similar.
proposal and then, well, we have to come up with an estimate for the cost of the study. So it would be supplemental and hopefully we'll have a shot at it. We'll go from there. I am working on some texts for your, your workshop. I will get you something. Um, but I've been juggling deadlines, so I didn't forget. We need to get the draw-through text together and I think that's all I have for you unless you have something for me.
I have one question. At the last meeting, Attorney Royce was here and he mentioned a letter he was going to be submitting about separation distances and stuff. And we'll see anything like that. Because I, I just thought that might be relevant to.
No, right.
What?
Those are the ones that he, she has, right, the pair.
I haven't received them. I've not heard.
I talked to her. On the, on the, there's a matter of having to do it gateways and this came up. And I related to him what Mr. Royce has been told us. And that we, as a commission, had nothing. And under the commission, then we will not.
I just want to remind you that you have an open public hearing, so we shouldn't be talking about this as a staff report, I think. So we have no, but at this point, we have not received. Sorry, sorry to cut you off, but.
I know Mark Alvera, uh, in, in addition to me, uh, we ended the Connecticut Fire Association Land Use Training, anybody else? It was a webinar. It was Saturday, March eleventh, and it ran from nine until after four o'clock. There's like one, one maybe two breaks and it was very long. But it was a fire hose of, of information. And the uh, we're doing okay. Um, there's a couple of things, there's one we've never had, which was a uh, Connecticut Environmental Protection Act intervenor. Not the Connecticut Environmental Policy Act, has the same letter of abbreviation, but the Protection Act. Any individual can put together a package and say, that application is bad for the environment and here's why. And they have to meet certain standards. Anybody can do that. And we have to incorporate, accept it and incorporate it into a process. Our process in terms of um meetings and stuff has been pretty good. But as you can tell from tonight, there are certain things regarding, especially regarding approval of special exceptions that we sort of um neglected, now work on doing better in the future. But um, I think the, the attitude was this project meets all the regulations and special exception, we hashed it out during the application. And if somebody were to uh, appeal our decision, the only thing that they would have to stand on would be that we didn't follow all the, check all the boxes on the procedures and the details in a motion. And we've been okay, but in order to comply with the reg, those regulations, then the motion gets a little longer. Sorry, Jolanda. That's, that's the way that, that goes. Um, phones and stuff on non-conformity, the big chapter in the book, uh, they're supposed to make materials available online. I haven't seen anything about that yet. So when it does. It satisfied, it satisfied, no. Attorney Ira Bloom from the eastern part of the state is very clear. He did training on uh, affordable housing. And most of it had the derivative threshold G. And so I think we're, we're okay on, on the topic. But he made it clear for those in attendance that he was only talking about it for half hour. And part of the requirement for commissioners is that we have one hour of training. He said, no, you can't listen to mine twice. So um, we still, I still have more training than I have, than that, than I have to do. And you have, you have to have a total of four hours altogether and one hour has to be on air housing. So some, sometime before January of next year. Find some training, you'll, you'll hear about it from the office in emails.
And the goal was for the mandatory training to wait till we get a little closer to elections to have it, so at least that way we know who's running, who's already a member versus trying to have a training now and finding out we need to have some of that mandatory training. So that was my thought was to wait till we get a, we get a little bit closer.
That glass was filled up, I tried to get in, I couldn't.
There was, I think, five hundred people.
You would think there'd be a limit to it online.
I think it's as much as the interface.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Motion to adjourn. Jerry Lewis makes a motion to adjourn, seconded by here, move to one, all in favor? Aye, opposed, carries unanimously.